The Eastside County School Board of Education in order. Welcome all of you here. Remind you that Eastside County Schools empower all students to become productive, responsible citizens in an ever-changing global society. I'd like to ask for approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
We have motion to approve the agenda in the second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Aye or zero. We're going to consult items. We have prior meeting minutes before you. Bills and financial statement. Financial statement is a bit limited yet. Still lots of work to do pulling the two schools together and bringing all of those things up to date. Getting more complete all the time, but probably won't be for another meeting for sure or two. Just have to be patient with those things. It's not an easy task.
Any questions on the minutes? Should be four sets of minutes in front of you. Let's see maybe on the financials. You have the SAC and WLVA giving pretty preliminary financials just to show you some preliminary balances.
What's that? What's that right page there?
Okay, and that's part of the bills, Chris. On the bills you have pages one through four with a single space. And those are the bills that we ran for tonight's meeting. The other page of bills that is just a two-sided page are bills that were either paid prior to these being done or after these were done and before the meeting. And they don't print out what is crucial, I guess, to get some of the other dates.
So this is just part of your?
But it's still a business of bills for people. For example, the first one on there, Academy Roofing, on other payments prior to tonight. And the project was already approved and almost like completed, but far enough along the road than that one. Okay?
Yeah. It was just bigger than that. Thank you for that.
John, it is all over. Do you have your?
You know what? They're not, Marcia. So I will have to do something for the press for those. But I'll help you with that. I hadn't thought of that.
I don't know if I can ask this question about the roof. I think there was $500,000 in that account. They set aside for that. We're not going to spend all that, so. It really truly wasn't, it was a separate account, but it was always listed in the and capital silo fund account, so. What I haven't looked at yet, but.
It wasn't so.
What was left in the capital projects fund is just what's left. There isn't any other funds needed. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So then that answer your question, that rolls into the?
Right.
School, what used to be the school office.
There's a check there. Two of our association school boards for cable meeting, $700, 815. What's that? What's?
That has to be the register. It wasn't a cable meeting. That has to be mislabeled by which registration. Reduced.
Do we have registered for cable workshops?
Well, I didn't take some, I just wanted to know.
We'll just have to back track on it.
Some of the larger ones on there. We had special education expenses for last year to Carroll Community Schools for $30,000. EMC Publishing, some textbooks for high school. I have a computer deep on. We've been online repairs to ore stations.
How's that coming? Is it in there?
It's, there's a lot of work. There's been a lot done. There's a lot to do.
That's the only one I need.
Want me to pay that one each, one time?
On page three, we've replaced 100 laptops. And that would be in the section under fiscal plan and equipment.
That's the CD.
CDWDSG, that's for, that's 100 laptops. Care control systems work in at least two of our buildings. Doing work here in the kitchen and cafeteria, they've been working late. On the new FCS room and in the office. Central Iowa distributing would be a lot of our supplies for the next 12 months. We bring those in at one time storm in the middle school. I believe it's where I stole those. And to build eyesight could be the remainder of the cabinets for the FCS room.
Do we need?
Yeah, if there's no more questions, I'll make motions here. If there are, I'll try and answer them. Entertaining motion to approve the bill to Albury Oil for $4.18.
Salute.
A second.
Motion in the second to approve the bill. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. I entertain a motion to approve the bills to Lakeview Lumber and Walleye Lumber for a total of $2,403.42.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Motion in the second for those two bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries four zero. And then I would entertain a motion to approve the remaining consent items, which would be remaining bills on account. Four sets of minutes in the financials.
I'll make that motion.
Motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries five seconds.
Moving on to reports.
A couple of things, I guess, to draw your attention to. One is, you're back, it's essential schedule for the preschool workshop, or at least the district portion of that. And again, let me know, but I would love if board members could attend the morning on Monday over at Cendio Auditorium. Please let me know if you're able to come for that piece of it at least. Probably through 10 o'clock is what we'd love to have you there if possible. Should we tell you now?
Well, yeah, I'll.
I'll be there. Yes, yes.
I'll start. I don't know if I'll make it till 10. I'll see.
You don't want to wait to see what happens.
Sorry, I'll see.
Thank you. One of the things that you'll see on that schedule is taking pictures, and we're still working out the details of photo IDs. We've got some for all staff members, again, dealing with security issues of having a photo ID. And have some thoughts for the future and dealing with security for the buildings and for our students and for our staff. And so that'll unfold over the next year or two.
Is that an expensive program?
The ID thing?
Yeah.
No.
I had a thought about that. I don't know, you know, it might be nice if board members had such a pass so that if they came to the school, they didn't have to, you know, check in, could be in the hallway without feeling like they were someplace where they shouldn't be, even though that's not the case.
We can probably check that one.
That's just a thought.
I really think this is something that's really important for our faculty and also our kids. You know, I mean, the more security that we can have, the better off all the parents are going to be. You know, Chuck, you asked if it was expensive. I think, you know, that could be relative.
Well, I thought, you know, adding five more people couldn't be that much.
Couldn't be that big of a deal, right? I just think this is a good way to go. I think you're doing the right thing here, Dr. Feeney. I was wondering, you know, I read this too. I was wondering if there's a way where we could train our teachers, you know, we train our teachers to be better teachers, but sometimes they need to be more alert as far as kids go. You know, we, they probably know everybody that walks in and out of the school. If they don't know them, then they're probably going to ask questions. But sometimes we've got to think about our kids and, you know, if you see Bobby running down the hallways and something doesn't look right, we would need to talk to a principal about that, or, you know, is there some kind of training that we need to do for that?
Reason it came to my mind was that, I'm sure that most of the teachers would know who I was. Kids, not necessarily. And I think we ought to train the kids, if they see somebody in the hall without a tag on, without a tag, there's something wrong. And they ought to report it to somebody right away.
And I think some of that takes place both cases, but it's something that we want to keep at the top of our thought process and awareness level. You know, God help us that we ever have an infiltrator or some problem, but you have to plan to be as proactive to try to prevent those things. Yeah, anyone that thinks that they can't happen in rural Iowa isn't living on this planet.
And it's not just this industry. I mean, hospitals do that now. Everybody must be name tagged. And if, you know, the salesman comes in, there's supposed to be a visitor's badge. And obviously you have family members, but at night since it's a real time, the staff is keyed in to someone who's there, who they just wonder, what are they doing? So you have to be keyed in, any public place that deals with.
So there'll be some more things coming on that over the coming time.
You were talking about tightening up security in the future. Do you have something specific in mind, mechanical or electronic sort of security? What, could you be more specific about that?
Well, this is just my thought at this point without running it through the correct channels. But my thought is, the name badges, that's step one. Step two is we'll have a discussion about, at least at high school, how should have some kind of an identification as well. Then we'll talk about, in fact, this fall, our school I is in is, excuse me, is building a map and a system for all four buildings to identify room or exits so that it's a common language between if there ever was a problem, go, you need to get the kids out 5A or whatever the door is. That's, that's taking place. And that's an inexpensive one. The, the next step would be is going away from the key system to an electronic slide, card system of some manner. And with that, you have options of, you know, having all the doors locked and you have to be buzzed to get in. And I don't know about that yet, but that's the direction we're going in all four buildings. Let me rephrase that. That's the direction I would envision us going, but I don't make those decisions.
Well, here's my feeling on it. We keep talking about expensive and inexpensive, and I know nobody's talking about money right now, but at this point, we're not talking about how much money we're going to spend. But if it's, if the safety of the kid was involved, inexpensive, inexpensive kind of goes out the window.
Amen.
Just my thoughts.
I'm going to talk about the website, but I'm going to save that for when we get down to unfinished business because I'm going to show you a couple of things on the website, actually. Then the only other thing that I put in there was a thought about the potential of some type of senior activity pass or something, if that's been done in either district or historically, or what you thought was something that you would like us to pursue if you wanted to throw out your two cents worth, or tell me all that's not something we're interested in, or.
I think we should pursue that. I think this is just like the, you know, teachers retiring. I mean, you know, these, everybody pays taxes, whether you're, you know, 30 and, or old, or 80, whatever, you know? Doesn't matter how old you are, you pay taxes, so we should, you know, try to involve those elderly people as much as we can. I think it's a great idea. I mean, I think, I think you could get a lot more people to a game, any kind of a game.
Did Saks City used to have something in place to knowledge?
No, can I remember as far as senior citizens or?
I don't know how to set the criteria, but do you want us to investigate that and bring it back to you with some suggestions, kind of like what we did with the bullet paths?
What does an activity ticket cost right now?
For a senior citizen, it was $80, I believe, and senior citizen, I believe it's $40.
And they already do have it in the new street?
There is a new district.
I had a, I had one person ask me about this past week, ask if we'd ever discussed it, and I told him that it had not been discussed at the board level. So, wondered if we might, and I said, oh, it's a possibility that we could.
I think it would be worth our time to investigate it.
No, we can establish who is a senior citizen.
That's what I was thinking.
It doesn't have to be 50 years old like somebody's, you know, a lot of activities at 50 years senior citizen into the other shot, so.
How about?
It wouldn't cost you, wouldn't cost us much.
How about, we'll put it on your agenda next month, and we'll bring back some thoughts and suggestions, and you can take it as an action item or not, but I think, I appreciate it on, my opinion at least, is that any way that we can involve people in our school district that don't directly have kids in the school district is a good thing. To get people into the buildings and to be part of the bigger, from the community into the bigger school community is, that's good stuff.
Actually, you know, those, those people that, who don't have kids in school are more involved in what the board does than the people who have kids in school, honestly. So, you know, that may be a good way to keep them involved in what the school does.
Can you come back the next meeting and find out how many senior citizen passes we actually, you know, give out here? You know what, the money we'd be losing. I don't want to say thanks for losing, but giving up, I guess, so.
You betcha. That's all I have for right now, unless you have questions for me.
You know, Kevin, you said you were going to talk about the website a little bit later, but I kind of wanted to say something to the board here. You know, we got, we did get beat up about our website, but I think we still, we still need to be proud of our school system. I had the opportunity to go to Norwalk a week ago. Actually, I was in the one brother lives in Norwalk. Went to church with him and got to talking to some people that were in Norwalk, and they moved, they said they moved to Norwalk specifically for the school system that was there. And then she proceeded to tell me all the things that were wrong with the Norwalk school system. Well, I got the opportunity to tell her how good our school system is, that our kids could graduate from here with somewhere around 20 to 25, even 30 credits of college credit and not cost them anything. She could not believe that. So, I mean, I thought that was pretty cool that, first of all, she couldn't believe it. Second of all, they go to, I mean, they got a really nice, big school there, and she.
Growing, yeah.
Yeah, she would, she specifically said that it was growing too much, so. You know, we should be proud of our school system and not just hold it in, you know, let people know that.
Just one other thing that I forgot because it was, when I made my notes, it came in after that. And just so you're the first people to know, I got an email yesterday from our, from Jill Sunblatt, who works at Prairie Lakes AEA, making sure we were aware, and I was pseudo-aware, I guess, that the middle school is going to be listed on the SENA list, on that school in need of assistance. And that means that we've missed targets on test scores for two consecutive years. And what that involves, just to give you an update, and then we'll come back to it next month with more information. Because again, I got the email yes, last night, actually. The middle school was on the watch last, watch list last year for math and reading. Reading was met this year for the two subgroups, and the two subgroups were low socioeconomic and IEP specialty students. The math targets were not met in both of those subgroups. And so that means that there will be some things happening that have to occur because of the no child left behind legislation. And we've got a meeting set Thursday afternoon to start the process of what's involved in this, what do we have to do, and they guide the process. It's a combination of local efforts as well as efforts with the state and with AEA. I just got that information yesterday, so you need to be aware of that. When we get down to discussing future agenda items, I've already listed that that will be something that will be on next month's board meeting to give you an update where we're at and give you more data. Right now, I'm sharing what I've got, so.
And in light of the governor's education summit and the legislature's continued increase in involvement in education, those are things that are going to be big for any school system that's involved with it. Right away, it's going to impact the teacher in the classroom, so there's a lot to be considered here.
And I want to emphasize too, it's, it's not an indication of non-equality schools or a reflection on teachers or any reflection on any individuals. It's a reflection of the fact that we have to raise test scores, putting a no child left behind in all areas, but specifically in those two subgroups, not in the large, that's not what we're getting pinged for, it's for those two subgroups. And so we've got some work to do, so roll up our sleeves and let's get at it. But I'll keep you on the rest.
So we're going to deal with that new summer project up next?
Like I said, I'm not quite done yet. Yeah, just a quick snapshot. I'm going to go over the computer. I bought a cheap camera today, so. I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. Did you have any advance indication that the school was about to be listed as SENA?
Not that I'm aware of, Curtis. I mean, we were on the watch list last year, so we knew that.
We talked about it at the board meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Couple of months ago.
Once you're on the watch list, you know that you're going to be considered in those areas for next year for sure. So there's all that possibility.
So, and again, Julie Meyer may have gotten something official at the end of school year. I don't, I don't really know that it was a, that was first indication. Was it a shock to you? It wasn't, you know?
Did they include any specific data about where the weaknesses were in that email from the AAN?
It's just those two subgroups is all I know at this point. We'll know a lot more Thursday. We have our, our.
There's one exception, that's really disappointing.
Hey, hey, hey. I'm going to tell Nancy you said that about her.
She knows when we're in math.
All right. How do I get it to stop moving, man?
It's going on loop again. I think it stops.
Oh, okay.
Nope.
I'm doing that.
Oh, all right.
I just went around today to give you a snapshot of where we're at with a few of the big pro, big crotch.
You just have to hit the button on the side. If you go left.
It took it off loop.
Where? And click the, click the actual button there, the radio button.
Take that off?
Shouldn't that do it?
Hey, I'm trying that.
No, it didn't do it.
We're going to at least make it slow. And we're going to back up. This is the office remodel as you walk in the door at the high school for the central office. What's, the carpet went in this weekend, and actually right now, the baseboards in. Well, that's my office, and the baseboards in. We're moving in tomorrow. It's not 100% ready, and the counters are what's holding us up. This is actually the conference room that we built into that space. I'm sorry, I don't know where to stand. I'll just move over here. How's that? It's going to go at its own rate anyway. This is the hallway going back, John's office, this is the right, and the back will be a record room. The conference room, I started to say that high school's never had a private area for IEP meetings and whatnot, so that's really why we added that. This is the hallway going down to the new FCS room. We're eventually going to put the stuff in.
Well, it looks a little different.
Yeah, that's, that's the old ICN room, and the heating, the heating folks were there today, and the electricians, and that had come together, but we're anticipating that one being a little late. I just thought, you can't see the carpet. This is in the front office, just was re-carbanded.
Are you using those squares? It looks like those were carpet squares.
That was carpet squares everywhere. That office didn't, I don't know why. These are the new partitions of the new material. This is in the high school, but these are uniform throughout. This is the preschool piece of equipment at Wall Lake Elementary, and you see the bricks.
This is really nice. Really nice. I got a chance to walk through that. That's really nice.
Yeah, and this is real similar to what you'll see out here. I didn't take any pictures in this building because I thought we'd go for it two or later. This is just a different shot of that in the courtyard at the Wall Lake Elementary. It's a delightful space.
That's, that's ground up rubber on the bottom there. It's like four or five inches deep. I mean, you can fall on that and not even feel it.
Yeah, it's kind of the standard, they say. It's very safe, or the safest you can get it. This is just a picture of carpet replacement. This again is at Wall Lake Elementary. And they, those are the squares, and that's what the guys have been using. The auditorium isn't done yet. I talked to Keith today, and the new carpet should be in hopefully by the end of the week or the first of next week. That one doesn't impact, and we all saw the guy's supposed to come with the screen. Okay, now here's where we get a little, now alarm's too strong. This is the middle school bathrooms. As you can tell, there's a little work to be done yet. And that's Bruce and the guys putting up those partitions. But surprisingly, it looks like it's in a world of hurt, but I think we're going to make it because the, it's a matter of timing and stuff. The counters have been put in, the plumbing is basically ready to go. That's all that, I call it monolite, the washable stuff on the walls, that's all done. It's a matter of getting the partitions up and then putting the finishing touches. So even though I would feel a lot better if this was a picture of two weeks ago, we can't change that. The other thing, I just took a picture, is that Dave, and then Dale's going to be doing it here too, is mounting the projection units in the ceiling. And then you'll also see that there's been some replacement of whiteboards, especially in this building at the middle school. And the reason I showed you those is that those go hand in hand to be able to put, I'll come back to that one, to be able to go with whiteboard technology like what we have available in Cindy Wecker's with the videos. And so it's really part of the bigger plan that opens up avenues that we need to be walking down. This then is in the entryway at the, at the middle school, and Danny added a television, and he will be developing student activities. It's not just an announcement, but to actually show things that kids are involved in at the middle school that will be looped and then portrayed at all times. That's just kind of a quick snapshot. And then truthfully, at four o'clock afternoon, I ran out of time. Other things that we didn't talk about, didn't talk about this building at all. Somebody mentioned the roof earlier, and as you can tell, the roof is finished. The roof work is done. And the painting of the overhang has really changed the physical appearance of the building. We ended up making a slight adjustment, and, and most of that came from a discussion with Earl Stone, who was hired by, by Academy Roofing to do the masonry that was built into that project, who was $10,000 billed in to fix some crumbling masonry in this building. And there's really quite a bit on the corners and stuff that hadn't, that hadn't been taken care of in a while. But he said the design, and when you walk outside, pay attention, there's a. But he said the design, and when you walk outside, pay attention, there's a group of soldiers that really give it a nice look, but for whatever reason, the soldiers are recessed back. And that looks cool too, except it also is one of the reasons that we've had problems with moisture and brick cracking and doing all of that is because it provides a great ledge. The other thing, if you'll notice, on the overhang here, it's got some other fancier name, but the overhangs that have been painted, where the flashing comes down in the original design goes right into that area that's recessed back with the soldiers. So it's not rocket science to figure out why we have some masonry problems. And so I just okayed, it was under the, I forget how much it was going to cost, but it was well under the threshold and Academy Roofing is providing some additional piece of steel. And then Earl was going to put that in and caulk it so that when water comes off those things, it no longer will blend and cause the same problems that we have now. But it will solve the problem in the long term. The other thing is that we'll get a price from, from Earl and at some point to re-caulk all of that soldier area because we, and that's not an immediate concern, but it is by next summer at least, otherwise we're going to not seal this thing up and we're going to have problems again in the future. My philosophy on buildings is pretty straightforward, is that you need to take care of them and we need to get into the notion of preventive maintenance and not play catch-up.
Have we thought about, I know you've only been here for two years, but have we thought about like a three or a five-year plan of, because I mean, you're right, buildings are very important.
Yeah, and the answer is yes, we've thought about it and have we got it done yet? The answer, there's no. Part of when we restructured a little bit and Steve Nootman became director of building and grounds, one of the things that he'll be charged, or has been charged with, is to develop a three or a five-year plan so that we can plan for things and look ahead so that we're not playing catch-up with, with buildings and try to stay out of the curve. So it's coming, sometime during this academic, we'll bring you a report.
I think we should say too publicly that Steve and the guys are doing a really good job. I know they've been catching some heat in Wall Lake about some of the things that they're doing and some of the things aren't getting done like people think they should, but these guys, these guys took on an awful lot this year. And I think a three to five-year plan, a five-year plan will help an awful lot with that. We don't have to bite off quite as much as we did this year. I think it's really important to do what we did, but just want to say that Steve and the guys are doing a really good job and honestly, if you guys see him, tell him thank you, because they don't hear that enough.
I would echo that. Are we there yet? No, and you'll see walking around even this building, we're not there yet, you will be. And the guys and the gals really have worked their tails out and they're changing, especially this particular building, changing the landscape dramatically and what the building looks like and what it feels like when you walk in. So, yeah, in all four buildings, north side of the district, south side of the district, universal, the maintenance folks have been incredible.
Those same, actually, probably could be secretarial staff too.
With the exception of John.
Is he secretarial? No, I'm kidding.
What are some of the criticisms of the Wall Lake program?
Well, not necessarily the program, but one of the things that happened was we had a, we have a swing set on our playground and there was a fence that ran behind this swing set and that fence was too close to this swing set. So it had to be moved and we moved it into a place where a citizen of the town did not like it. So Mr. Feeny got to.
Remind it.
Yeah, calm, calm down the citizen. I mean, it's fine now, everything got worked out, but just, you know, these, these guys work so hard and you talk about proud, I mean, these guys are proud to do what they're doing. And then, you know, somebody comes and says, hey, this isn't right, why did you do this?
And it was fine, once we talked or communicated. It was just that the fence was coming here and it was too close to that, we had to uproot the whole swing set and it made more sense at this point to move the fence back. And a citizen didn't like it, we talked through it, that it's probably not a permanent situation, but it's better for kids and it was fine. That, that's the kind of stuff that we're talking about. Nothing of substance.
Would you be able to remind us how much, how much was spent altogether on these projects this summer?
Well, we can give you a much better figure next, next month, but I would estimate about $800,000 probably, give or take.
What do we prove things?
Counting the roof. Yeah. Okay, unless there's questions, it's our update.
In our reports, item C, Italian trip, early trip?
I just talked to the teacher today and they gave their presentation of Kiwanis today and I don't know where they are. So if they're not here, then let's move on to next one.
We do unfinished business, report on instructional support.
Yeah, and that's just an update. We got the resolution that was passed on August 1st that was delivered the next day, actually, the commissioner of elections, it will appear on the ballot on Tuesday, September 13th, in the form that you approved it, which was a combination of income surtax and property tax, just an update on that. And also, I wanted to show you on our website how we've tried to disseminate information and this is a follow-up to the hearing. Okay, on our website, and just publicly too, is that as board members and administrators and employees of the district, what I'm sharing with you isn't advocating for the instructional support levy, it's the purpose of sharing information, which is what we can do. And so I just wanted you all to see what has been put together to try to help people understand. If you go to the news section, click on it, click for instructional support levy resources. The top part, I just wrote real quickly that it's what's going on and different information and there are questions and then when the vote is scheduled, it's in conjunction with regular school board elections. And then you come down here, there's, what is there, 15 different things that people that want to learn more about the instructional support program can go to. And I would draw your attention to a couple of things. I'll just run through it real quickly. Iowa code just gives the, the three sections of the Iowa code that this is, is run from. If anybody wants to look up what districts have the instructional support program and at what levy, that's a spreadsheet from last year at least. I haven't seen a new one for everyone involved in the, in the state. This is school finance of a presentation that was given at the Sac City Lions Club. This is a copy of the flyer that we made available at registration, that was a one, one-page, two-sides, basic information about the instructional support program. School Finance 101, Part 1, 2, and 3, those are copies of three articles that John and I authored. When did we do that, John? It would have been late last fall, early winter for the local papers, trying to get people to understand some of the nuances of school finance. And probably the biggest one is that you can look at a pebble fund and there might be $500,000 in there, but a pebble fund can only be used for certain specific purposes dealing with, with school infrastructure. It can't be slid over to buy textbooks or any of that stuff. And that's what we were trying to get people to at least have a basic. This one is kind of interesting, not, not the rest of them, I can't really think because my dog is not crazy. Trust me, I'll have to pull it up. Figuring property tax just goes through the, what's involved in the residential rollback, it explains that. It also puts in there what our tax rate levy is, and it also has a point to where people can plug in their own taxable valuation to see exactly what this would cost at this level, this level, and this level. What we can't do is provide the public with a specific number because the way this works is you're well aware, is that if this is approved on Tuesday, September 13th, then you as a board, before we certify next year's budget sometime next spring, will have to set three things really, or two things. One is, do you want to levy for the instructional support program? Yes or no? If yes, then what percentage is income surtax, what percentage would be property tax? So we can't be specific with the public to tell them exactly, what we can do is give them the range and that's what we've done. Here's the most it would cost, here's the least it would cost, and let people figure that out. That's what the Figuring Property Tax PDF does. Figuring income surtax is exactly the same, except dealing with income surtax. It actually directs people to go to a particular line on their Iowa 1040 form, take that figure times whatever percentage it is, and it'll tell you exactly based on last year's taxes what the cost would be. And I don't know how else, if somebody has suggestions, they'll certainly listen, but that's about as specific as we can be in giving people accurate information. Board rationale is the points that you raised when you approved the resolution, dealing with the potential of declining enrollment and the loss of funds from the state for consolidation, et cetera, et cetera. Ballot resolution is just a file that was approved so people can see it ahead of time. And then this property tax, property and income tax scenario was put together by Margaret Buckton from ISFIS. And it's a spreadsheet that is really, really useful because it tells you the percentage, it's the one that I shared with you at, at the budget hearing, but it's been modified to highlight an example of how the three tables all fit together. And if people take time to read it, it's very, very useful. And then some frequently asked questions, which you've seen before. So that's what we have available to the public through our website. And I just wanted all of you to be aware of that and, and.
As well as the public. That's all. Dr. Feeny, can you go back to the, you pop up the very first page? Please? I can't see, because I'm on the glasses on some. On this part right here, where it says August 17th, is there any way we could have had, like the school board meeting on there today? Had a glance without having to search for it? I mean, I had to go over to the districts and the school board thing. Is there a reason that we can't have August 15th, school board meeting at 6:00? Right here is the highlight, so you wouldn't have to look just at the first glance to find it?
Sure, once we get back full time, it'll be much easier to do. But it is, like you said, Jane, it is listed in the district.
Yeah, I looked it up in districts, but I'm just saying that if a guy pops up on a glance, you just say, okay. Or there's a ballgame tonight at 6:00, but, I mean, is there?
Yep, we can do that.
Just an idea.
Yep, we can do that. Other questions?
Christopher, John. Could you create an Excel sheet? And tell me if this is too simplistic, actually. Could there be a column that says where you input your value of your property? A column where you put the figure for line 17 from your 1040? A column that says what percentage of income surtax there's going to be? And a column that says what percentage of property levy there's going to be? And give everyone a really simple tool, is that too simplistic or is that?
No, it's really not.
And then, and then, and then create a formula?
Tell them what's line 17 on 1040.
Why you just picked that? I mean.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not just saying whatever.
That's what he said.
Yeah, that's not too simple and we could do that.
That could just be.
The only problem, the only thing that concerns me when I do that, or we, if we would provide that, would be somebody would say, well, wait a minute, you put this up and it said I was going to owe $100 in property tax and $30 in surtax, so I voted yes and now I owe twice that. I mean, that, that would be where we would maybe have a concern.
I really like that, I could jump into. I really like and I've really thought, how can we do that? The issue is, and what we've tried to do, Curtis and everyone else, is give what the range is and you go to the tax scenarios, because we don't know what the income surtax rate is. We know what the maximum could be, we know what the minimum could be, and we know the same about the tax, property tax levy, on what the minimum would be and what the maximum would be, but we don't know what that breakout's going to be.
Well, you could, this could be a, this could be a tool for anyone to use, it would be simple, because you're the one thinking of the formula, not, not someone having to create it for themselves. And, you know, I don't know, if it would just take a stiff disclaimer or whatever from your, from your lawyer, it would give people an idea what, obviously not for the vote, but as you, if it's passed, as it's coming up, it would tell them what you're talking about. And it would not be abstract then.
The part I like about that idea is I don't think it's as expensive as maybe some people think it is, so.
Yeah, and I like, I like the idea on the basis if we can find a way to make it simple and in one place, all of what you're asking for is right here.
Right.
It's just you're saying, let's pull it together.
I'm saying someone comes, someone comes up to your website and inputs five numbers, gets a, gets a number.
Gets an answer.
Right.
I mean, I like the idea.
Takes the debate out of it, takes any of that.
Move on to 6:30, report on school board election.
Just going to give you one. Just as, again, Keith is keeping it in front of the public primarily, I guess. School board election statewide is Tuesday, September 13th. Polling hours will be 12 noon until 8:00 PM. Four voting sites, and John, you're going to have to help me, there's one in Auburn, which is.
Auburn Fire Station, Lakeview Fire Station, in the Wall Lake community buildings, and SAC is up to courthouse, right? Courthouse?
Always has been.
Same force.
Is what has been.
Right.
Okay, and then we have two, two candidates running and, and so there's an important election as well as that's the instructional support vote, so. Well put.
New business, discuss and or approve school technology.
Yeah, and I alluded to this last month with the board on, on that we are going a different direction with technology support than what we had last year. And what we've done is entered, want to enter into a school technology technician program with Prairie Lakes, which is a program that they have offered for a while and initially, initially it was utilized by schools and then it's kind of gone away and now it's coming back. But what the program is, is that we're really hiring, it's a purchase service to get someone to manage and run the servers as well as other things that we want them to do, but that, they work directly with the people that we bought the servers through and that set up the new servers, which is area Prairie Lakes AEA. So asking that you approve this contract for technology support.
Two questions. Says that AEA, for 100 days, had a cost of $22,000. How many hours constitute a day for those people? And is travel time part of that day?
I can answer the latter question and no, it's not. It's workday, so workday for us would be considered to be 7:30 to 4:00 or whatever we designate.
Did we have somebody doing this before?
We had a purchase service through a company in Storm Lake last year.
Hasn't there been?
Yes.
So this is money that we've actually spent before?
Of course.
Yeah.
We just think it's more efficient. And the thing that is, is that this person is in-house, two days a week or, or more. We can adjust this and take some time out of the summer if we want. Really, we're, we're purchasing the service, how we carve it out is really going to be up to us. And that's a lot of specific to your question that I, I believe. And then the second part of that, again, talked about last month, it's not a board action, is that we're utilizing services of Computer Depot downtown, they've been working with us this summer on the fix it part, and they've been doing a magnificent job, very pleased thus far. Very pleased thus far. So we need to make a motion to approve AEA? Well, I'll make that motion. That we approve the contract for Prairie Lakes AEA for 100 days, and it costs $2,000.
Second. Give a motion second to approve the school technology technician agreement with Prairie Lakes Area Education Agency. Motion a second. Time for discussion.
How much did the contract with the Storm Lake place cost last year?
It was $3,000 per month.
$3,000 per month?
For unlimited time. That would have been about $12,000 a month, based on time this year. I exaggerated. It was, it was up to, it might not have been an exaggeration.
So the, the reason you're, you're looking at the switch is primarily for cost?
Two reasons. One is cost, and the other is the fact that we've utilized the services that we're already paying through for AEA with designing the servers and updating and doing all of that. This is seen once because these people are trained by the people that set up our servers, and that naturally gives us direct access to the mines there.
Was there a, was there an IT position last year at the school?
There's a, there's a, Beth's position is called Technology Coordinator. And that involves overseeing ordering and whatnot, and that's, that's position is shifting to Technology Integrationist, actually. We want Beth in the classrooms, helping the teachers to have the opportunity to integrate technology. That's how her job's changing. Plus, the stuff that we're talking about, running servers at four sites that we're doing, is complicated. We're sure of it.
Any other questions or comments? Remember the motion? All right. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's move on to 7B. Discuss and/or approve school bus purchase.
Last year, we started getting back, I mean, back on rotation of bus replacements, and so this is the next step. What you have as a recommendation is the same as what we bought last year. They honor the same price. We're recommending, when I say we, I'm really talking about Phil, who knows this far better than I do. This year, going with the same 65 passenger from Thomas, with the hope being that next year, when we're talking about replacing a bus in the fleet, we're able to look at an off-lease bus. That's what we would prefer to do. That doesn't exist right now.
Does that C2 tell me this is a Cummins diesel engine? Is it a diesel or is it a gas engine?
He's always recommended diesel.
It's diesel.
It was always one diesel.
I think the C2 is valuable.
It's definitely a diesel.
It's a diesel.
C2.
How old is the oldest bus that was had on the rocks last year?
Do you know, John? I don't. You're not looking. As fast as I ask is how, how many years are we going to buy a bus?
We have, right, we have 14 buses in the fleet. And it's been a long time since I've discussed this issue with Phil. I'm almost certain that if we replace one a year and get back on that rotation, we would still have a bus that's 14 years old. And 14 used to be a magic number for school districts because the state would take them off the road.
For you.
When they were 14 years old, for you. So, they don't do that anymore, as long as they pass a physical inspection. I know we were still running 95 prior to running the bus mid-year last year, because I, we gave that bus to Donnie, and he was running 95. After that, check, I don't recall what the next oldest one was.
That one.
97 and 98 were the next two in line.
I did ask Phil, because in the update, I think I mentioned that it would go as into a spare. The one that's being replaced, we can go to be a spare, and it's going to be jumped.
Has our buses had their physical inspection this year? Is that summed up? I think we know.
We'll be notified here shortly when it will be. Maybe one in the fall, one in the spring. So it'll be anytime during first semester. Could be September, could be December.
They will give you an date, though.
Yeah. They'll be on our website here about the time school starts.
And truthfully, this is an attempt to do what we talked about with some issue about Morgan.
They're cheerleading out there, isn't it?
Oh, okay. I think that's the... Well, Morgan was one of the students that was coming, I think, for Italy, too.
Somebody told me Phil about surtax.
I'm sure that's exactly what it is. Because here they come. In any case, what I started to say is, this is really an attempt to do exactly what we talked about wanting to do with capital projects, and that's to have a rotation. And we need to get back on that rotation.
Is there any thought to a bigger bus?
There is.
I don't know if they do more utilization, but I know that when we go to track meets, we take a bus and two vans. We go to, I'm just throwing out ideas here, I'm not, no facts. I do know that track meets, we're taking the bus and two vans. Football games, maybe instead of taking three buses, we can take two. But I don't know if the bus is bigger. I'm just throwing out, can you get bigger? How much is a bigger bus?
It's quite a bit. Here's our logic, because I had the same discussion with Phil for several reasons. There's, there will, we believe that there will be some off-lease buses coming next year, and you save about 15,000 to 20,000 to 25,000 on a bus. And that's why this needs to be for a route. Next year, when we can save more money, we'll use a lease bus and get a bigger bus.
That's the problem, getting a bigger bus, and it's too big for a...
It can be too big.
It can be. But no, we recognize that there's a need, but our thought is, is that if it comes off lease, we can save the district more by waiting a year on that.
Thank you. Allow you to approach the parents and ask them if their child will or will not ride, and structure your odds that way. You could save a ton of money.
Probably buy a van.
But that's, that's against the law to do that. You have to have a seat for every kid on the route.
I did, I know I watch the bus go by my travel road every day, and pretty empty. But whatever.
Some little small kids you don't see.
Okay. Whatever.
Okay. Any more discussion about school bus? Anybody here to make a motion relative to purchasing a bus?
I'll make a motion to purchase the Thomas C2 65 passenger bus.
A second.
Give a motion second to purchase that. Thomas C2 65 passenger, $73,500. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a teacher. There'll be young people here to talk to us about a trip. They'd like to send us, they'd like to send us on a trip, or like for us to send them on a trip.
Well, we would just like to tell you about the trip that you did send us on.
Yeah, this is Sarah Carlson, who's a high school English teacher for us, and she led a trip that you approved earlier to Italy, and we just asked them to, to come back and tell you a little bit about the trip, and I don't know.
I'll eventually be asking you about another trip, so... Well, again, I'm Sarah Carlson, and I was here almost a year ago asking you to consider sending East SAC high school students on a trip. And we just returned a couple weeks ago, and so we were here to tell you a little bit about our trip. I'm here to tell you a big thank you for beginning this new adventure, this new global adventure for the high school kids at East SAC County High, and maybe even some in the future for the middle school students. This is the fourth school trip that I've led, and it was, it was a great experience. It was a great chance for me to get to know the students. And when we look at, you guys know as well as anyone, when we look at the future of the high school and look at the kind of education that we're trying to give students, that we have to prepare them for a global world, a global society, and that includes global education. I think I can speak for many of the teachers, at least at the high school level, and probably at all levels, that we try to give the students as much experience as we can when we're teaching them about whatever subject matter that might be. But when they can actually experience it themselves, I think it adds not only to the education that we bring them back into the classroom with, but just providing well-rounded students that we can send out into the community and hopefully send back out into the world. So, not only that, but colleges, future, their future careers will demand that they have some of that experience. And I think that they're going to tell you in a few minutes that the experiences they had were...
Awesome.
Hopefully not one of a lifetime, because we hope that they will have the opportunity, whether or not they're, they are students at East SAC County High or in the future, to go back out and know that they can, they can live outside of Sex City, Wall Lake, Lakeview, Auburn, Iowa, the United States. I'm going to ask each one of them to come up and introduce themselves, and they're going to tell just a little bit about their experience, maybe some of the highlights, maybe something they learned. And as I'm doing that, I'm just going to let some of these photos roll, so you can see some of the places, some of the things they experienced. The trip, we started off in Italy, and we spent about four days in Italy. It was a nine-day tour, and two of those days were travel. Our first day and our ninth day, we were on an airplane. So we actually had seven days, and four of those were in Italy. We spent a couple days in Rome. We headed to Florence, Pisa, and Verona. So for those, I know they all just love having Shakespeare, so, right? Right? And then we were in Austria for a day, and then we spent our last few days in Germany, mostly in Munich. So, some of these experiences, well, all of these, are just a little bit of taste of where they were at.
How many kids went, Sarah?
There were seven, there were seven students from East SAC, and there were five students from my former school, St. Mary's in Storm Lake. So that was another great experience. There were twelve of us total. Another teacher from the high school took the tickets, and I also had two parents that went along. We were on a bus, a group, there were, there were 50 of us in total on the tour. Another group from Iowa. They were from Kelowna, Iowa. A group from Texas, Wisconsin, and a retired teaching group. Oh, they were from Texas, Wisconsin, and Verona. And then we had a couple actual staff members from EF that were on tour with us as well. So, I mean, it was a great, it was a great group. As a matter of fact, when we were in Munich, our hotel in Munich, the last, well, it was there last night, but there was another group from Iowa on a separate EF tour, and they were from where?
Pella.
Pella, Iowa. So, it's a small world when you get to, when you get outside of Munich and you meet some kids that are just a few hundred miles away from, away. In Rome, all of the city water, all the fountains are, is drinkable water, and it's good water. And so we refilled our water bottles, excuse me, and drank out of the fountains, except for Trumby Fountain right here. They didn't want us getting near the water there. But this is the famed Trumby Fountain. If you throw a coin in to make a wish, hopefully that means that you'll be able to come back to Italy.
Did it come true, Morgan?
Well, she's hoping so, right, Morgan? These are the Spanish Steps in Rome, one of Rome's famed Seven Hills. Here's all of the kids on the tour toward the end of our day. We're getting ready to go to supper there. This is our second day when we headed to Vatican City. Some of the photos at, in St. Peter's Basilica. We were able to take pictures everywhere except for the Sistine Chapel. This is right outside of St. Peter's. This is, you can see the lines and lines of people leading out, that was leading out to St. Peter's Square. Another great thing about EF is that we came across hundreds of people in line for a lot of the venues we went to. Hours worth of line standing. And we went right to the front of the line. Another great benefit, we didn't have to take that time to stand in line at the Colosseum, at Vatican, lots of the places that we went to. Some of the girls got Hannah tattoos. Is it still on? You still got it on?
Halfway, yes, halfway.
This was Tyson, our tour guide from EF, who is actually from the United States. He's from Indiana, but he is of Italian heritage, so he speaks Italian. So it was great having someone who not only spoke great Italian, but we can understand him, because English was good. Yes, excellent English. Some of the St. Mary's girls in front of the Colosseum, and East SAC and St. Mary's girls. Now, in addition to EF providing us a tour guide for the length of our tour, we also had local tour guides. And one of the local tour guides we had was at the Colosseum. She was not only a tour guide, but she was an archaeologist. And so she, that's her on the left. Morgan, you look like you're really impressed. She gave us just an amazing tour and a knowledge of the Colosseum, but you'll see in, in a couple pictures. I only let them sit there because both of their mothers were standing right there. But the forum of some of the other ruins that are just adjacent to the Colosseum here. There's one of our retired teachers. We had beautiful weather.
Perfect weather.
Our last day rain.
A little bit.
Just a little bit. I'm not sure where you were, but it, it poured on us.
It poured for like an hour. We hit it.
Oh, in Munich.
We hit it in the subways.
This is Pisa. We did just a little getaway in Pisa. We went, there's a couple beautiful Duomo, there's a Duomo and Basilica there. Couple of the kids tried their durnedest to hold up that leaning tower. They did a pretty good job. One of the things the kids commented on, they were really surprised, especially in Rome, is the graffiti. And Tyson reminded us that anything that ends in an I or a vowel, the word derives from Italian, so graffiti is definitely Italian. Most of our tour was a walking tour, and we probably walked between eight and 10 miles a day, in addition to having a luxury, a very nice motor coach bus that we were on. Does someone want to tell them about the, the padlocks? What the padlocks mean? We saw this at a couple different cities in Rome.
You like write, you like write a person's name on the lock, and then you lock it. And if you, usually you take the key and throw it in the river, and if somebody finds it and locks your lock, then your, your love is broken.
If the lock stays locked, then your love is forever.
Forever.
Deal.
Long.
This was, as we came into Germany. As a matter of fact, my son, my little guy said to me, that looks like the princess castle, and that, that was, that was Nusschwanstein. It was the prototype for the Disney castle. Brad's going to talk a little bit about his experience at Dachau in just a minute after. I've just got a couple minutes of pictures here. There's a couple original buildings from this concentration camp site. Otherwise, most all the buildings have been reconstructed because they had all been torn down, burnt, and demolished at the end of the war. But the one building you'll see coming up here, this, this is... But the one building you'll see coming up here, this, this is a re, this is a restructured building of like the entry hall that they would have come in. These are re, they rebuilt two barracks and then there are thirty other original barracks sites and they're all numbered. That was a number. The crematorium is the original crematorium. These are the original ovens. There was also a gas chamber that you'll see. They don't believe that anyone was gassed here, here. They don't believe that this was ever used. They hadn't reached that point where they were beginning that process here. But they did have, here's a fumigation cubicle where they would have brought them in and hung up all their clothes, hung up their things here and...
How did they kill them before they cremated them?
Pardon me?
How did they kill them before they cremated them if they didn't gas them? Do we have to start?
Pardon me? Yeah. At this, at this, our tour guide said at this, at this concentration camp, they were, they would shoot them, I mean, they would, or they'd shoot, you know, they would line them all up and then they fire, shoot them all into a big pit or, yes, I mean, they would starve to death.
A lot of them died from typhus too.
Yeah. This was at the BMW museum in, as we were in Bavarian, the Bavarian sector of Germany This is the city center, this is the famed Glockenspiel, and there's the famed Herd Rock. This is right across from the...
Hofburg House.
The Hofburg House, which I did not see them, but as one of Hitler's meeting sites, if you looked really hard, our tour guide said that underneath the paint on the ceiling, that you could still see swastikas painted on the ceiling. But I did not see them. There were, as everywhere, a lot of places that we went, the multitudes of people, of tourists at all times at all of, at the places, but it really did, it didn't really interfere with anything. Kids, why don't you come up here, introduce yourselves, and then just maybe tell the board what the trip meant to you, maybe personally, educationally, I don't know. Or would you like them to come up right up here? I'm sorry, they're right in front of you.
Wherever you're comfortable.
All right. Okay. I'm Brad Picknicki. The trip for me was just a great experience to get out of the country and see everything, the architecture and the art. But the place that was the most interesting to me and trying to word this, was the concentration camp, you know, just to be in that same place and walk where everything happened and see where all that took place. I mean, it's hard to describe. I mean, even though it wasn't that crowded and it was in a big, open space, I caught myself whispering to people even when I didn't have to. And I'm not really sure why, whether it was out of respect or just because it was a sad place, you know, and it was just mind-blowing. I don't even know how to describe it. I felt at points like I shouldn't be here, you know? But then this guy translated a writing on a reef that someone had put down and it said, "They live as long as we speak about them." So that's when I was like, you know, I really should be here. But it was just so weird because it looked so natural. I mean, there were flowers growing in the grass and a river running through it. It was just...
Almost overwhelming.
It was.
It was the one place where, not very often did I have to ever remind kids of how to behave at all on the trip. Very well-behaved students and all of the students on the whole bus. But it's funny, when you got there, there was this automatic where everyone just knew that, that the tone had changed and everyone really appreciated where they were at.
Last person in there.
Pardon me?
I ended up being the last person out.
You stayed until closing.
Yeah. Because Tyson was...
We could have spent, we could have spent the whole entire day there.
Yeah. I'll go. Well, I'm Morgan Alhousen. My favorite part was like, I love Austria. We went to Austria and they had a whole bunch of mountains and, you know, they're like really pretty and you get to see everything. And, I mean, you go to all these, like, like the Colosseum and you see things you hear about in history class, but you never really think they're that interesting until you're there and it's like, these are really, like, the Colosseum was a lot bigger than I pictured it to be. It was, it was really cool, really good experience. I learned a lot from it.
I'm Abby Picken and I didn't really have a favorite part of the trip because it was all interesting just to go and see. It was kind of hard to pick a favorite because it was all fun. But I liked Austria a lot too because it was nice to see all the mountains and it was really pretty.
Definitely one thing I realized about the trip was, if there's any question that it's not educational, it really is. Because, you know, we learned a lot of stuff, like the name of how the Colosseum got its name, you know, because Romans never called it the Colosseum. They called it the amphitheater. And it didn't get the name of Colosseum until this emperor erected a statue and it was called the Colossus and then that's where the name came from, you know? So it really is. Because I'd never read anything about that. And...
Just moving into the different cultures.
Oh, yeah.
Unbelievable. You just can't imagine how different our cultures are.
Hones and navigation.
And yet, we're very, we're very common line with the people in Europe, you know? Some days, some of you travel to Asia, places like that.
And it's a lot different.
It's a tremendous experience and a lot, most of the young people today, before they graduate from college, will have taken a trip out of the country as part of their education.
Yes, definitely.
I will say to my mentor...
Higher education is going toward that. Kids have opportunities for internships and for studies abroad and...
You were talking about the culture change. It's even funny how, because Italy and Germany, you know, they're, they're pretty small countries and they're close together, but the differences in culture just between those two, I mean, even like the architecture, you know, the architecture and Sistine Chapel and the Colosseum were way different from that of Nuschwahnstein. I don't know how to say it. And, you know, it was totally different, you know? And you guys see...
Did you exchange any, did you exchange any of your money?
Yes, yeah, we, we...
That's kind of shocking, wasn't it?
Yeah. It was, you know, and then you're, because sometimes you're like, "Oh, this is cheap." And then you figure in your head, it's like, ew.
Well, when they, you know, they exchanged like a hundred dollars and they only got...
Seventy-five bucks.
Yeah, barely. What you get, like, by the time you pay the exchange rate, you got what, like sixty, sixty-five dollars back? And there goes your money and you think, "Well, that was only ten dollars." Well, actually it was ten euros, so that means it was about sixteen dollars and so...
I didn't forget a card the whole time. It was a lot easier.
Well, I just got back, I went the third week of June, actually, when Chuck said that about people doing that in the future. I'm fifty-eight years old and the company just sent me over a year. I went to Rome and I went to France. And when you look at the Spanish Steps and, I mean, I probably would never have gone unless I had an opportunity like these guys did or unless I had a company that sent me like my company just did. But it was very educational. I was kind of surprised though because the number one hit over there is the flame where Diana...
In Paris.
Oh, you didn't go to Paris?
Yes, no, we didn't go to Paris, yes.
My fault.
No, that's okay, yeah.
We went to Paris, so, that was a big hit, but it was, but it was very, I know it's, it's very educational. I mean, when you look at the stuff that you were looking at, I couldn't believe this, I mean, it's, and the architecture, how they did that and they didn't, you know?
Well, when, when we were at the Pantheon in our first day in Rome and they talked about, do you remember how they said that they measured that out?
And it was, yeah.
Oh, my God.
With strings. With string.
To make it, that an entire, that an exact sphere that could fit inside of there. And the kids were, you know, I think they're thinking that in their heads.
Point zero centimeters, you know?
And like the, how heavy that ceiling was, you know, of all concrete, it's just...
Impressive, I mean, you know, and just the architecture itself and it's everywhere, you know, you just walk along the street like, "Look at that church, you know, what's that?" And it's just a pretty good old church, but it's still something that we don't see.
I loved how the foundations were just everywhere because they were beautiful.
You know, we even got kind of two different sides, you know, when we went from Rome, which was more ancient, our old architecture, and then to Germany where a lot of it was new because it was all rebuilt after the war. So we kind of got two different sides of that.
Definitely.
What was the favorite kind of food that you tried in the chat?
Oh, gosh. Tell me. Well, Vlad became our gelato connoisseur. I think he had twenty or thirty different kinds all throughout Italy.
And the watermelon was my favorite. I feel I know.
A watermelon gelato.
It was really good. It was, that was also the one that we had a little bit off the trash can. It's another story.
Okay, say it, another story. What, did you like the pasta in Italy?
Oh, my God, the pasta was, and there's so many different types of pastas. And I loved them all. There was one, I did have my least favorite, but I, other than that, they were all really good.
I think they were, a lot of them were surprised at, okay, like spaghetti here in the United States or lasagna and then having it, it's just like eating tacos here and then you actually go down to Mexico or you go to Spain and you eat real Mexican food and, oh, it's, it's quite different, but...
I tried the patinier first day and it was, didn't even look the same as what it does here, you know? It's little thin noodles and they're really hard and...
Well, I thought it was funny, someone, I think it was, it was a page who ordered a pepperoni pizza and it had peppers on it.
Hannah.
Hannah. Hannah ordered pepperoni pizza and it was red peppers. No meat, I mean, at all. So they ended up picking up the peppers and eating the pizza.
No one starved.
No. No.
I was surprised at how many Italians truly knew English though. Because like you walk around, they'd be, they'd, like, you go to stores and they like say stuff to you and you just like look at them and they're like, "Americano?" And, "Yeah." And then they start talking.
Even more so in Germany, you know, I mean, Germany, a lot of them spoke English in Germany, very clearly, too.
Well, a lot of those people are multi.
Exactly, yeah.
We learned a few words too, like zekwin konodle. Anyone got a shot at that?
Dumplings.
German. Plum dumplings. We got a list of words to say and they were all useful and at the very bottom it said that word and then after it said dot, dot, dot. Fun to say. Plus, that's the one that you remember.
I can't remember.
We had someone pronounce it.
Do you have any questions for the kids?
Well, I appreciate your report. Lots of times we have people going some ways, maybe representing us even, and even though this is not directly sponsored by the school, I appreciate hearing what you got out of it.
We love to talk about this. It's a great adventure, so. Makes it easier for the next time you come and ask us.
You bet. Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, and before we go, I just do want to say again, thank you. And if you've looked into the research about students that travel, especially the younger they travel, you know, they do score higher, they are higher achieving, they do better in school, secondary and post-secondary. And one of the things, you know, last year I came a little late in asking for, you know, I usually plan a trip about every two years. As far as recruiting, you know, I hate to call it recruiting, but getting students and parents that want to travel and fundraising, it's, it's hard to do that, at least for one person, every year. And so I hope you will consider us for another trip in two years and perhaps I will be back to officially make that official so that we can get that fundraising. These kids fundraised throughout the school year and this past summer. Between the seven of them, they raised over $10,000 through school, through in-school, through athletic events. I ran a fireworks stand this summer for my third summer in a row for 10 days and I think all of these kids, yes, all of these kids came and helped. So, so they did work hard and I think they all, and even their parents, realize, you know, the value of their trip. So, so anyway, so thank you again for having us.
Thanks for coming.
Teresa Tigges from the high school had asked about the possibility of going through the same company that Sarah went through, looking at a trip to Belize next summer in conjunction with folks from Carol in different places. But I haven't seen the information specifically about the trip, so I'm not comfortable in recommending anything until she did. And Teresa was on this Italy trip with Sarah, so I think we'll just have to come back to that. Do you discuss and/or approve propane versus natural gas? Well, I think we just probably have a little discussion of...
I'd say, yeah, this is primarily a discussion I want you to run with the check.
Yeah.
Typically this time of year, first of all, SAC does not burn any propane and, or we do not burn any propane at the middle school or the SAC elementary site. We have some propane at the Wall Lake site and the Lakeview campus, okay?
So we burn natural gas here?
Natural gas here, yeah. And Wall Lake has two buildings, two metal buildings that have propane to them, plus a couple of water heaters. Other than that, Wall Lake is all natural gas. In Lakeview, the new Ag building, Bus Barn Combination is propane. The weight room is propane. The industrial technology building that is the other standalone building is propane. And the kitchen appliances are propane, as well as the greenhouse. So there's a fair amount of propane there. Last year, we paid $1.499 for our propane. We burned about 16,500 gallons. All right? The quote I received a couple of weeks ago was for $1.799, which if we burn the same amount of propane, would be about $30,000. The conversion I'm seeing at the current price of natural gas is we could save probably over $10,000. Would be closer to $20,000 than we would $30,000 if all of these items were already burning natural gas. So I guess that just brings up the discussion, do you have an interest? If you do, we have work to do. I'm not even sure we can get everything done this fall, but...
When I asked John, when I called him about this was, how close are we to these various sources, you know, how difficult is it for us to hook up to these? Because it was right after I contracted my LP that I got concerned because when I saw the big jump, I knew that we're using a fair amount of LP in the district down there.
And we are.
Over a period of a couple of years, it makes a lot...
The Wall Lake campus, it's already, it would not be a big issue, I don't believe.
It's probably pretty close.
It's real close. Lakeview being, the natural gas currently comes into the Lakeview building just off the highway, onto that north wing. If you drive by, you'll see the meter there and everything. So to get from there to, say, the new building, orderly request of the natural gas company to put a second meter in.
I was going to say, we might be able to put one.
Right.
South sided area, they're easier than hell.
And then there's, there's going to be, I don't think the fire marshal, and we'll invite him in to find out, but I know electrical, you're only supposed to have one entrance now. I'm sure there are going to be similar concerns about gas entry points, you know, for emergencies.
Well, I think it's worth looking into.
Yeah, even if we don't get it done this year, I would like for us to know what it would cost us, you know, get a little cost analysis on the thing. Well, it could be done, what our next step would have to be and a few things like that.
The city of Wall Lake will hook up the school for nothing. But as far as from inside the school to the...
Yeah, you know, you'll have to have the orifice changed and things like that.
That will be a cost. But I can tell you that the ratio, if you use 100 gallons of propane, you would use 91 thermes. you would use 91 thermes of natural gas.
What's a therm right now, do you know?
Our, our gas right now is $1.14, up to 20,000 thermes. Now, I don't know, I don't know how much the school uses. But you get over, get over 20,000, it goes down 15 cents. But that, that will go down also. Our, our gas goes up in the summertime. It'll go down. It'll be about a dollar. It'll be about a dollar. Lakeview might be different than that. I don't know exactly.
The calculation that we ran was, we ran with June prices, which was 96 cents. And natural gas was actually half of propane at that price.
Yeah, I think the payback, once we get this laid out so it's organized and manageable, the payback on that, based on current from what John was, as we were talking today, will be pretty quick. And so it's something that we ought to get real serious about as fast as we can and do it right.
I don't think we're, we're taking a vote on something like this, but I do think we ought to proceed to find out what it's going to cost and what the feasibility is.
We'll ring the lady. We'll add it next month.
Pardon me?
We'll ring it back next month.
Yeah, if you can have it next month.
I think, you know, we can think about, you know, if you do change over to natural gas, it's easy to change back over to propane if it ever comes to that. I mean, you've got everything around it. It's right there. All you've got to do is change an orifice. You've got all your pipes.
Your regulator and an orifice. Move on to make personnel resignations. I don't think there are any.
The last one after, prepared on Friday. Resignation from Don Brown as teacher associate. She needs to have action taken since she was issued a contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation.
Okay, we're supposed to second to accept Don Brown's resignation as a teacher associate. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Let Don for her service. Contracts.
Teacher associate, Rosie Brunz, which would be assigned at the middle school at a rate of $8.50. Should back up a little bit. We did negotiations this year. We actually laid out a schedule for hiring of different positions so that there's some consistency from year to year. It's more systemized than what it's been in the past, perhaps. Rosie Brunz for $8.50 at the middle school. Wendy Mischai at the high school, $8.25. Crystal Pudin's associate at the high school, $8.70. And Sarah Rodman at the high school, $8.50. Those are teacher associates. Oh, yeah. Then Wendy Marquez Cook, $8.25. That's a cook, food service. And then we also will add a contract for Sherri Butterfield, a cook at $8.85. And that will actually leave us two custodial positions in that realm. And we'll be interviewing later this week. I don't know if you want to, how you want to do that.
I believe that approved the contracts as presented. Okay, we have a motion second to approve the contracts as presented. Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Kristen Standall, four, is here. Okay, and one extension. Future agenda? Discuss future agenda on Sunday.
There's a few. Just possibilities. You know, we had a different looking summer school program this summer. So I think in September would be a good time to invite people over and all the teachers to get an update on that. And we'll put, we'll start putting back in during school the board update, board highlight, educational highlight, whatever we call it. So each month we'll have something that comes directly from the trenches of teaching and learning. And next month we'll look at summer school. We'll also have more information on the school in need of assistance. We'll have information on the senior activity pass criteria. We may have information in a request for a summer trip to Belize. And we'll also have an analysis of where we're at with natural gas and or at least what the next step is. That's what I've jotted down from tonight's meeting for next month.
We'll have a meeting, we elect officers.
Thank you. Yes. The first part of the meeting is with the existing board, this stuff. And then there'll be the organizational annual meeting with the RLC board. And, you know, you all remember, you do one and then we come back and John leads the second part. What about the, what report? We're probably going to wait till October. And September's going to be a busy month with the meeting. But we need to keep reading, don't we? Anything else that we're not, that I didn't hear?
I think a motion for a German.
Set the date officially.
We didn't do that. I thought it was set.
It is, unless you want to change it. It's Monday, September 19th. And just so you know, the board election's on the 13th, the canvas, which is a Tuesday. The official canvass is on Friday, the 16th. And so having the meeting on the regular time works very well, perfectly actually.
September 19th?
Yeah, works good for me. At, did you say at high school? I'm going to adjourn.
I'll second.
After you adjourn, please don't leave. I need to take a picture. I would like to take a picture of the board.
Motion second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.